You can't get from point A to point B. Ready on the right?
I'm really just.
Not happy with her end.
We'll bring the Brunswick County Board of Commissioners meeting to order for September 2, 2025. Thank everybody for being here. I've asked Commissioner Thompson to lead us in an invocation and pledge. If you would rise, gentlemen, please remove your caps.
Father God, we come to you this afternoon just full of joy and excitement that Brunswick County is what Brunswick County is. And we, we just appreciate that so very much, Father. Father, we ask that you be with us this afternoon as we deliberate over the business of the county. Father, leading guide us through each and every item, provide us with the insight necessary to make the correct decision, Father. Father, we always want to give thanks for those that have defended our right to be here, Father, and those today that are defending that right of freedom, Father. We also want to remember our EMS, our public safety personnel, our fire, our law enforcement personnel, Father, that are out there each and every day administering to the needs of our community, Father. We just offer all of this and just appreciation for all that you do in your holy and precious name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Commissioner Thompson. Any adjustments to the agenda? I know staff has one.
Yes, Chairman Forte, staff requests to remove item 6.1 regarding the fire protection and prevention ordinance.
Any other adjustments? Motion for approval of the agenda with that change?
Motion.
Thompson, Williams? All those in favor? Okay, this is where we come to the part, public comments. Each speaker may speak for three minutes. A group spokesman may speak for eight. Begin by stating your name and address when you come to the podium, please. Comments shall be civil, no personal attacks, obscenity, derogatory or slanderous remarks will be tolerated, or comments regarding anybody's candidacy for public office. Speakers should not expect the commissioners to engage in dialogue or answer any questions. This is a time for you to be heard. With that being said, first up, Barbara Kucinski Gilbert.
Hello, my name is Barbara Kucinski Gilbert. I live at 3825 Drury Lane in Southport. I'm here today to address the overdevelopment in Brunswick County. From what I have read lately, at least some of this board is willing to look at the problem and work on reasonable solutions. While the already approved new development can't be undone, it is possible to proceed more logically under new conditions. The current UDO is outdated. The planning board has been left with few options but to approve development that is often likely to exacerbate and possibly create additional problems. When our roads, water supply, electricity and healthcare needs are already at 80% and higher capacity, it doesn't take a rocket scientist to realize that the status quo is unacceptable. Flooding has already become the expectation after storms due to clear cutting and foolishly approved development. If we have a hurricane, it will be horrifyingly obvious that our established roads are not going to be able to safely evacuate everyone. Lives will be unnecessarily endangered and possibly lost. My request is the following. Make sure that the UDO is updated immediately so that the planning board can make the best possible recommendations. The Board of Commissioners must take back the final approval of development from the planning board. The Board of Commissioners must take the recommendations and also use logic when considering approval. For example, if the roads and all emergency services can't handle the additional building, it must be postponed or denied. We, the constituents, should be able to trust that the board is making intelligent decisions that benefit all of us and not just those who benefit financially from the approvals. Thank you.
Bill Eman? Eman, I am M-E-N.
Good afternoon.
Afternoon.
I am Bill Eman. I live at 2450 Grace Winds Drive, and I consider it Holden Beach, but it's supply. That's our mailing address. And I was so tickled that you guys started this meeting with a prayer and a pledge of allegiance. As an American, that warms my heart, and I want to thank you for that. The reason I am here, I've been led by the Lord to come here today, and I don't want to step on any toes. I don't want to point on, point any fingers at anybody. But I'm not from here originally. I had the opportunity to move here 41 years ago from an area of this country, this great, this great country that basically man had abused for decades and decades and decades. Now, in my 41st year here in Brunswick County, I feel like that abuse is starting to trickle here, all puns intended. I look at this county like a hand. We've got the Cape Fear River, the Brunswick River, the Lockwood Folly, the Shalote and the Calabash. We are a huge drainage system for about a third of this state, a filter. And I believe at this time, it's beginning to get compromised. When I moved here in 1985, you could go down to the intercoastal waterway on a low tide, and I could look to my left, and I'd see 100 people clamming. I'd look to my right, and I would see 100 people clamming. Now, all of those waters are permanently closed. And I just am hearing the call from a lot of my constituents that, you know, these types of things really supposed to start at the federal level to the state and then to the county. And I don't know what it will take to, to kind of slow this down, but I think a lot of us here have children and grandchildren. And to keep this Brunswick County as pristine as we can would be a God sent. Thank you.
Thank you. Nora Thompson. Come on up, all of you. Come on, come forward. Glad to see you.
Wonder about half of them are taller than you and me.
Yeah, thanks for pointing, thanks for pointing that out. Ms. Thompson?
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Nora Thompson, and I'm proud to be standing here with the members of Brunswick County 4-H. Tonight, I get to talk about something that has seriously changed my life and probably some of theirs. The 4-H Dairy Project. Before I started, I never.
Sorry, Ms. Thompson, I'm sorry. Can you get a little closer to the mic?
My name is Nora, oh, um, I get to talk about something that has completely changed my life and probably some of theirs. The 4-H Dairy Project. Before I started, I never thought I'd be working with a dairy calf. Honestly, I was a little nervous at first, but this project has taught me so much, not only about animals, but about myself and what it means to be part of a community. How many of you have ever tried leading a calf that weighs more than you do? It's not as easy as it looks, but it's something that I'll never forget learning. The dairy project is simple in idea, but big in impact. Each of us gets paired with a dairy calf, and it becomes our job to take care of it, feeding her, grooming her, and teaching her to walk with us. Most of us don't live on farms, and some of us have never touched a cow before this project. But through this project, we've learned responsibility and patience in ways that school alone could not teach us. These calves depend on some of us every single day. That means showing up, being consistent, and working hard. There are no shortcuts when an animal is counting on you. When one member, Britten, was just starting, she was nervous just being next to her calf. It was so much bigger than her, and she didn't know if she could handle it. But after a few weeks of practice, something changed. Not only did she learn how to guide her calf, she found a strength in herself that she didn't know she had. I've seen the same thing in other kids too. Some shy kids who used to avoid speaking up are now giving tips to others. We've learned that leadership isn't about being the loudest voice. It's about being steady, dependable, and willing to help. Riley, our attorney 4-Her, stated in a recent show after dealing with a very headstrong heifer, being a part of this project over the past year has taught me so much. Each practice helps me appreciate the value of hard work, commitment, and caring for animals. It has also taught me that no matter how hard life gets, or how stubborn your heifer is, if you are patient and consistent, you can make your goals a reality. Another amazing part of this project is the connection to agriculture. Before this, I didn't realize just how much work goes into raising an animal. Now, I understand that farming is about commitment and care every single day. It's not just about us kids and the animals. This project brings in local farmers, families, and volunteers who guide us along the way. It's a real community effort, and it makes you feel like you're a part of something bigger than yourself. If you ask one of us how to move a stubborn calf, we'll probably get 10 different answers, most involving patience and a little humor. All of this hard work builds up to one big event, the first ever Brunswick County 4-H Dairy Derby. For us, Dairy Show Day is a day when we finally get to walk into the show ring with our calves, from our families, our friends, and our community. Standing there with your calf by your side and the crowd cheering, that's a feeling you can't put into words. And we would like to share that experience with you. The Dairy Derby will consist of multiple dairy activities that will test your knowledge, teamwork, and athletic ability. But the best part is the community leader showmanship class. That's when adults like teachers, business owners, and even elected officials step into the ring. The fun part is that we, the youth, get to teach, get to be your coaches. Picture this, a 10-year-old telling you to fix your grip on the halter in front of everyone. It's funny, it's humbling, and it shows how much we've learned when the roles are reversed, and that's why I'm here tonight. On behalf of all of us in the 4-H Dairy Project, I would like to invite you to join us for the Dairy Derby on Friday, October 17th, beginning at 3:00 P.M. We welcome you to come a little early as well to see the heifers being prepared and to experience the excitement as we get everything ready. It would mean so much to us to see our county leaders take part in something that we care about deeply. Your involvement shows that the hard work we've invested truly matters and that you believe in supporting the future leaders of Brunswick County. In closing, I would like to thank you for supporting Brunswick County 4-H. This project has taught me more than how to handle a calf. It's taught me responsibility, leader, leadership, and confidence, things I'll carry with me for the rest of my life. I hope you'll join us at the Dairy Derby on October 17th. Come see the pride on our faces, join our community, and maybe even try leading a calf yourself. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Wait a second, let them sit.
I'm sure we will later, but not right now.
Thank you again.
Nora, I plan on being there, so anyway.
It's already on my calendar.
I think we all are, yeah.
All right, moving on, the approval of the consent agenda. I need a motion.
So may.
Thompson, second?
I'll second.
Williams? Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Motion passed. All right, moving on to presentations. We have removed number one, so Emergency Management, Mr. McIntyre, come on down.
Good afternoon, everybody. Hope everybody's having an enjoyable weekend. Commissioners, I greatly appreciate the opportunity to bring information back to you as requested following our event last September, known as PTC-8, Potential Tropical Cyclone 8. So today, I want to present the results of our after-action activities that went on following this storm. So we'll kind of start out here. As you may recall, September 16th of 2024, PTC-8 impacted Brunswick County with heavy rain, flash flooding, infrastructure disruption, and significant damage. We did have some sustained with higher winds, but this event was basically a rain event for us. Unfortunately, it came with a high toll throughout the event. So following this event, per guidance from, from you, the board, requested after-action review task force to be developed or pulled together, and that was done with several of our public safety department heads, two representatives from the board. We met a total, I believe, four times plus numerous conversations, you know, offline to pull this information together. In short, our review reveals that we had a well-coordinated initial response. We had strong public engagement and effective use of communication platforms. But we also identified some critical challenges that we have here in Brunswick County. We talked about the amount of waterways that we have and so forth, our roadway drainage, public awareness. We did have some shortfalls there. Our shelter capacity and our flood plain management are all things that popped up during this process. So as we move through this, this after-action report, we will see some of that information come forward, and you've also been presented with the full after-action document as well. And at the end, we'll, we'll talk about some recommendations on things that either we've already completed in our improvement plan, or things that will take time, effort, and ultimately financial support to accomplish. So as mentioned, PTC-8 developed rapidly off our coast and moved into Brunswick County. It was not registered, or not classified as a tropical storm or hurricane. This is one of those systems that everybody goes, it's a hurricane, it's a tropical storm. This was one of our problems that we had moving into this system was, it's not a named storm. If anything, this helps us moving forward, and I'll, we'll talk about that later, that it doesn't take a named storm to make huge impacts to a community, especially Brunswick County. Our efforts were exact, you know, were even worse than what we would have had, you know, moving into this, but if y'all remember, I believe it was almost four weeks, give or take a day, that we experienced Tropical Storm Debbie. They came in and dumped a lot of rain into our system, so our capacity and our swamps and our rivers just wasn't there to absorb the, you know, large amounts of rain that we did encounter during PTC-8. Meteorologically speaking, Tropical Storm, it was pretty much what we had. It just wasn't named. We had heavy rain and some sustained winds. I believe the max wind recorded was somewhere in like 50 miles an hour sustained. We had limited advance notice on this storm. We knew there was something brewing out there, but the forecast just wasn't supporting anything significant going to happen up to and the morning of said event. Flash flooding conditions driven by, I'll say inadequate runoff channels and debris blockages. There's been discussion about our ditches and cleaning our ditches out. But many of those blockages that we, we see happen outside of the right-ofways. It happens where those streams of water go into our wooded areas and so forth, where those aren't, aren't controlled by either us nor Department of Transportation. So some of those things come into play as we experience these events.
Can I comment on the prior slide before you get off of it?
Yes, sir.
If we can go back to that one.
Well, if I can figure this thing out, why do I keep going?
You're going the other way. Didn't mean to get you. And in conclusion.
I mean, you know, operator error.
Yeah, I, yeah, I think the first bullet, I think the heavy rainfall may be a bit understated, given how much we got, how quickly in some areas. I mean, that was Florence level per hour in a couple of areas, I think. So that's just, I thought, just wanted to point out, I think that having read through the document that was on the debt dius here, I do think that part may be a little understated.
And I agree, if I may, also, you remember there were two low pressures? That thing basically split into two low pressures, and one of them sat over Southport, Bullen Spring Lakes, Bald Head Island, Southport area, just sat there, and mid-sentence, the meteorologist who was saying it was going to be like maybe four inches or better, he said, this is not supposed to be doing this.
Right.
And so it surprised everybody. So that's the way it is.
When we were on that 9:00 AM team call.
That's right.
It had already been raining for three and a half, four hours, and he was still saying, three to five inches.
Yep. It was already past ten.
Yeah, I already had more than that on the ground.
And he's good. I mean, he's real good. He can flat call them, and he does. So anyway.
I'll try not to mess up your PowerPoint flow anymore.
Of course, he's so adept at using it.
And you're talking, we know it works.
So just like we do in any other storm or event that's threatening Brunswick County, we, we go through our preparedness actions. We, and I say, when I put EOC activation here, our, our EOC was at an heightened stance, monitoring the storm. Our EM staff was in the building, prepared to do whatever was necessary. And of course, just like you said, by nine, 10 o'clock, we were, by 10:30, we were fully activated in the EOC. So the activation happened very quickly on a system that we weren't expecting that, that much rain in that short period of time. But we had also been working our pre-storm briefings with all our partners. We had set up situational reports and briefings. We were doing county calls. Emergency alerts were sent out via Ready Brunswick in our social media. Most of those emergency alerts were those sent out via the National Weather Service utilizing our system, partner agency, plan activation, all our municipalities, our fire departments, et cetera, our internal departments as well. The sheriff, and it's mentioned here, Sheriff's Office and EMS had all their assets ready to go for deployment. Our senior centers, our recreational areas were prepped. We always tell our, our community to make sure that your yards and your, your personal effects are picked up, ready to go, and that's what we encourage our own departments to do, to make sure trash cans don't get blown around, things like that. But then we got into our response and recovery. We kind of got thrust into that activity pretty early on that Monday. From the administration view, our, our leadership provided policy direction and coordination throughout the incident. The manager worked with the board chair to get our declaration of emergency executed, along with legal. Finance worked with all of our appropriate partners, this more so on the recovery side. But our finance department's always active in our, in our activations, one way or another, to ensure that we're documenting expenses, et cetera, but they were very active in our PA process and are still continuing to work on that recovery process for this said event. Coordinated with our municipalities and other partners, provide open lines of communication. Like I said, our, our communication utilizing technology, Web EOC was available. Cell phones remained active. Luckily, we didn't lose any of those communications. Our Viper system stayed up as well as just our county coordination calls. And there's always the in-between calls that, hey, we got a question. And it's always our effort to make sure we have an answer, an appropriate answer for whatever their question, question may be. There was some questions that were brought up by a small group of municipalities in this that we handled kind of as a sidebar to make sure that we were addressing their, their questions and their needs, both during and after this said event. From the emergency operations side, I already kind of led to the fact that we went full activation. We had approximately about 40, 44, 40, 45 people in the EOC actively working throughout this event. The initial activation went for 36 hours. We, we just kind of worked through that, changing shifts. Once we got through that evening on Tuesday, things kind of got under control, and we were able to make some adjustments on that. But we remained in full activation throughout that week. Cross-discipline coordination across all of our partners, our nonprofits, our public safety folks, our state entities, our federal entities, all were communicated with to make sure that we had the best situational awareness that we could get. This was a very rapidly developing system for us in the fact that when you drop 20 inches of rain in one or two areas here in the county that was already wet in a matter of less than 12 hours, things, things changed just as quick, if not faster. We did have some preparedness stuff in place with, if I remember correctly, schools were on a two-hour delay. That ended up being made full-time. They went ahead and closed schools. The campus was, was not closed here on, at the center, but that decision by leadership was made pretty quick, get those, try to get those folks out of here so we can get home. As we all know, some people got home, some people got to hang out on 17 for a little while. Matter of fact, some of them were there for a while until the waters kind of got around. The Sheriff's Office DOT were able to, and Howard Patrol were able to work together and get us, get, try to get some of those people off. Actions to get those people water and food were initiated in amongst all the other rescue calls that we were performing as a whole. And then, as mentioned earlier, our daily conference calls, we did coordinate some resource requests, both in support out of our EOC, but as well as requested some resources to come in, more so in the fact of high-water vehicles, some variable message boards. And, but other than that, we were able to handle the majority of our needs in-house, which is always a good feeling. Brunswick County is in a really good place there. Not saying we have everything we need, but we're, we're well on our way. Emergency Services up-staffed their special operations team, which includes their high-water vehicle as well as their swift water team. As you all know, Brunswick County has a state asset swift water team, and it is our historic, I won't say policy, but it's our historic action, legacy action, to keep those folks in county when we're being affected. We, we do not like releasing them out of the county if we're, we're being threatened, and that was the case, so we held on to those assets. Sheriff's Office up-staffed, up-staffed their personnel. Obviously, CCOM took a brunt of our activities there. As far as calls for help, you know, just information, et cetera, they were able to accommodate that. Little scramble there at first, but very well-handled, very professional group. Thank Sheriff, I think he's in the back, thank him and his staff for supporting those activities. He also had all of his resources, including his boats, his aircraft, high-water vehicles, et cetera. Were all ready, ready, prepared and ready to go in our response. Sheltering was a little challenge. We didn't open up shelters initially, but due to the rapid growth of this event, we ended up with having to utilize multiple locations, and some of those locations not necessarily within our sheltering plan that we typically use. We, we have, as you well know, we have two primary shelters and then a third as is added in there as well as our risk shelters in the event that we're- is added in there as well as our risk shelters in the event that we're experiencing a tropical event. We, in this event, we ended up not using any of those. We ended up due to roads being closed off, uh, washed out, et cetera. We ended up, um, targeting. Uh, initially it was the D S S H H S building. Uh, we utilized, um, cooperative extension. We utilized the, uh, Bolivia Elementary as well as we were targeting South Brunswick High School, but due to flooding in their parking lot, we ended up sending our resources to Brunswick Middle. Um, we also, due to the way the roads were cut off in the island, islandy effect of Leland. Uh, very similar to what y'all experienced during, uh, Florence. Uh, we were actually able to work with the Leland Senior Center, get that facility available and the Red Cross was able to come over um, and help us out out of Wilmington. So we didn't, weren't trying to get our resources across, Red Cross handled that Leland Center and then transition to another facility outside of the senior center for more mid-range uh, sheltering needs, uh, for a small group of folks that just needed that extra time. We did, uh, find out that through various means that, um, our, most of our evacuees opted for family, friends and hotels. That's good. That's what we always like, cause we always, we tell our people we have shelters available, but it's, it's not, it shouldn't be your primary focus. They're, they're kinda that, you know, last refuge, point of refuge for folks that just doesn't have anywhere else to go. As well as, um, you know, that they got caught in something moving fast and, and we did, did have that, but we were able as collaborative effort to get these shelters up and running, um, kinda thinking outside the box. Other departments that worked well during this, this time, as we all did, Operation Services, the, the backbone of our fleet and facility group maintained all our fuel su- fuel supplies, our facilities up and running. Um, they did have some challenges with some water infiltration into this very building here. Um, but they were able to keep fleets up and running as well. One of the other large aspects of their, uh, participation was vector control. As we all know, post a major rain event on top of a rain event that happened four weeks ago. Those little flying bugs have a tendency to wanna get out of control. Uh, vector control worked with their rest, with other partners to make sure that, um, they communicated, worked with our communications department to make sure that communication went out to the public. This is what we're doing. Um, this is the need for it and then coordinated the actual spraying for the mosquito control post P T C eight. Public services and utilities, our water wastewater folks did a phenomenal job. That is a huge challenge. Uh, when we start talking the amount of flooding and water that was in areas like Southport, Oak Island and Bullin Spring Lakes, um, just trying to keep those systems up and running. Um, great job by that, that team as well. While maintaining the system throughout the county. So one of the things that we did to try to get, that we felt as a, a task force um, was important was for us to reach out to the community, get some input from the community, find out what they thought. Did, did we do well? Did we, were there things that they, they missed or didn't know of or had never heard of? Um, so during this process, we, we worked with Megan and the communication and Amber Green, that communications team and other members of the after-action task force generated, I believe it was thirty-four questions total with some of, for the input. Um, sent that out to various, um, survey monkeys, et cetera, different groups. Um, we ended up with a very good number in our responses. Um, oftentimes, especially it was sent a little bit further out than we probably would've. You know, in a perfect world, had this, uh, survey sent out, we still ended up with fourteen, little, almost fifteen hundred responses. Uh, thousand four hundred and seventy responses were returned. And of those, um, these are kinda the percentages in highlights. Ninety-four percent of the respondents were full-time residents of this county. Forty-seven percent of these, uh, ranked P T C eight is one of the top three worst tropical events that they have ever experienced. I will kinda add to that, that, um, of those, we, we don't know how many, how long these folks have lived here, you know? But still one of the top three for those that have experienced Florence and some of the others that you've experienced here over the years that have caused major destruction. Fifty-eight percent of the residents were prepared, ranging from buried to somewhat prepared. Um, ninety percent of them experienced some level of life disruption. That could have been in power outages, road detours, closed businesses, et cetera, but it was all some disruption to their livelihood. Thirty-five percented, percent reported, um, property damage, uh, mostly in flooding, some roof damage, uh, yard washout, et cetera. Uh, seventy-five of the, seventy-five percent of these didn't know that the county cannot maintain roads and stormwater systems that don't belong to us. Um, they don't, a lot of our, uh, residents don't understand that county doesn't own roads. Then eighty-four percent of the respondents did have homeowners insurance, but here's the shocking number, twenty, only twenty-nine percent of these respondents had flood insurance. And as you recall, a lot of our damage were in repeat areas where these homes had seen uh, flooding before, um, and so point nine percent of those, um, is kinda, kinda low when you start talking about the consistent threat that we experience here and along the southeastern North Carolina coast. Um, fifty-three percent is, we kinda then started looking at, um, some specific areas. Uh, information sources, where do our people get their information? It was found out that little over half of our respondents rely on local meteorologists. Fifty, little, about one tick over fifty percent use Ready Brunswick. Um, thirty-nine percent use, uses the sheriff's, uh, mobile app that he uses and uh, I know him and his team worked very hard to get information out using that. So, um, you'll see some plans here in the improvement part. Um, sixty percent were registered for Ready Brunswick, however, many were unaware of the system. So, you know, there's still that forty percent that may or may not know about, about the sit, about Ready Brunswick beyond our efforts to get that information out. Um, sheltering and evacuation, fifty-seven percent had flood emergency plans. You can scratch the word hotels. That was a, that was a typo on my, my fact, if you haven't very done it. Um, but, uh, seventy-three percent had evacuation plans, which are good. Because not only the county has an evacuation plan, which is updated on an annual basis. Um, but we ask our, our municipalities should have evacuation plans and more importantly, individuals should have evacuation plans. And it's great to see that seventy-three percent of that fourteen seventy had evacuation plans. Seventy-three percent did not know if they lived in an evacuation zone. Um, the idea of know your zone, um, is out there. Um, more people are starting to see it. Um, there's some updates that need to be done to that. We'll see that momentarily. Eighty-eight percent of the respondents did not relocate or evacuate their homes. We did, were not able to caption that, capture that if it was by, by their own decision. They figured it's not gonna be bad. I'm staying home. Or if it was, they were trapped by floodwater. So as a whole, excuse me, uh, the key themes, key themes on this um, were our communications, as you saw. Um, a lot of people were getting information. We were putting a lot of information out. Our traffic management was, you know, difficult, um, in that first twenty-four, thirty-six and even throughout the week as things changed down towards Southport, uh, but working with our partners with D O Ts, Sheriff's Office, Highway Patrol, et cetera. Um, able to get some detours in place and even however they may have been inconvenient at times, um, but they were still able to move around. Um, in our emergency services, our response across all of our emerg- our public safety folks, um, I would not be doing justice if I didn't mention our fire departments, our volunteer fire departments, our, our municipal departments, all out risking everything they had, um, to save, uh, residents in this community, ensure their safety. But even with those strengths, we still have some weaknesses to work on. Urban planning, drainage maintenance, flood control and public awareness. Some of these we have control over, some of them we don't. Some of them rely on other state agencies, et cetera, but the public awareness side, we have, we can handle. You know, pretty, we have the, the ability and the, the drive to, to fix that. So we're in many cases already working on that. Um, critical issues that were identified, highway flooding, seventeen, two eleven, one thirty-three. Uh, magnitude of, um, at, you know, secondary and tertiary roads throughout the county flooded. Um, we worked, you know, diligently with our I T folks um, to maintain a road closure board in, um, cooperation with the sheriff's office there as well. Um, we were able to keep a road closure map in place that communications was sending out. It was available on Web E O C. Um, that just happened to be the most up-to-date road closure map that was available. We found that D O T's board was, was lagging in time, just trying to keep up with it. We were able to get it. Um, as they came in, we could get them added into that board. Emergency notification, there was some inconsistency across platforms. Um, we always strive to push one message. Avoid communication confusion, conflicting orders, whatever they may be, we always try to ensure one message. So um, that is something that our communications team, my office and others, um, are working, continuously working to improve to ensure that our messages are the same. But we all know we can't control social media and, uh, other platforms like that that swears, uh, ten-foot sharks wa- you know, swimming down the middle of Highway seventeen or whatever the situation may be. We, we just can't control those. The shelter planning, um, we do have a problem there. Um, we're all well aware of it. Our amount of hardened facilities that we have here in the county are, are very limited. Um, so those type facilities have, should be, you know, we're hoping to look at. Um, that's some of that long-term remediation or development that we'll mention in a minute. And then, uh, resource needs. Remember I said the only, one of the only two items that we brought in through our department was high-water vehicles and modeling tools. High-water vehicles was that, that piece. After Florence, we saw a huge increase in high-water vehicles. Um, fire departments, municipalities, the sheriff's office, emergency ma- or emergency medical services has one. Utilities has one, et cetera. Um, but we're still short with that. When we were very targeted in one section of the county, if we were seeing a bigger impact across the county, our needs would have been much higher and we'd have been requesting a lot more of those type resources. Modeling tools, there's a ton of stuff out there on the market now for flooding, et cetera, working with flood plain management, et cetera, the state hydrologists, et cetera. Um, we all, all can improve those modeling tools. So we talk about all that to get to this point. So this is the recommendation, um, on things that we have, should be working on, have been working on, or will be working on in the future. Um, and we kinda broke it up in, um, in immediate, short-term and then long-term, um, situations, but some of these short-term pieces were already, um, either working on or have, uh, completed, um, moving forward. So we wanna facilitate consistent messaging with our public and our external partners. Um, working on pre-canned messages in our mass notification system, um, et cetera, be it Everbridge. You know, if we ever have to send out a wireless emergency alert message, those have to be scripted. Um, we, we see this in our rep program. Uh, so there's no reason we don't have it in this, this part of our emergency management program. So that's something we're working on. Um, communicate with our administration day-to-day, uh, more so utilizing our alert system, et cetera. However, that, um, gets laid out disaster situations, programs, you know, like Everbridge. In the he, the battle, we, we have in the past relied on, um, leadership to pass those messages on to you guys so that, you know, just because it, it may be just in the fact of just run short on time, um, but we, we strive to improve that so that we're, uh, getting those, those messages. We are sending situational reports every day, at least once a day. Um, so that you guys, so that the board and leadership and all our partners get that. Uh, work with our local media channels. We urge our folk, our residents to rely on reputable sources and our local media falls in that group. So we wanna work with those folks to get accurate road conditions and closures out to the public. We can get it out in social media. We get it out on our website. We get it out, you know, through various other means. But, you know, if fifty-three percent of our folks are looking to local media, we should be pushing that out on local media as well. Uh, finalize and distribute know your zone. I mentioned this earlier. Um, know your zone. We currently have three zones, evacuation zones. We have A, B, and C. We wanna take it to D, E, and maybe F to include freshwater flooding. Um, that's something that we've seen in other counties along the coast. Because a lot of our threat, as you know, isn't necessarily the first, the, I mean, surge is one thing, but it's all that water that sits there and then all that water that comes back after it's fallen inland into our rivers or just ponding causing flooding, uh, very much like it did in B S L, uh, Leland, Winnebau area, that, et cetera. So we wanna add those. We'll be working with our partners, um, in, with the state. They manage that system. So we'll work with them to get those maps updated based on the most current data that we have, those modeling, uh, of flooding. Our evacuation maps, um, our evacuation maps, I hate to say it, they are what they are. In the sense that we have very, we have limited evacuation routes that handle, can handle traffic. But we need to work with D O T and get those remarked. There's been so much construction and stuff, a lot of those evacuation signs. Yes, sir.
I think one of the issues that we talk about, we talk about among ourselves a lot, is that when we get on these conference calls and we're starting to go active ahead of time, this was a no-notice event, basically. Um, but the thing about it is we, we come up with municipalities and other partners online and we tell them you need to get out or you need to plan out. We gotta back time our, our things. And I have to tell you, there's a lot of situations where some cases that other entities do not act and they sit there and wanna wait and see. I get it, they do. But the problem is when they decide to act, and the same thing with individuals. They sit there and they watch all the stuff on television or whatever and think it's all cool and everything. And then all of a sudden they make a decision, I need to really leave if I'm gonna do it. And then that's when your, your evacuation routes are really clogged. And the other thing is that hopefully, you know, the issue you have, you have a wreck or something, you know, motor vehicle accident or something like that, or something gets unexpectedly flooded out or like Winnebau. It just fell in because it's a tidal area. There's no development or anything, it just fell in. Um, then you're really messed up. You can't get out. So the thing is, I think that we need to really force this message across the lines of saying, when we tell you to get out, we're not playing. We're telling you to get out and it's on you if you don't, because all this planning in the world is great, but if people don't pay attention to it, it's not gonna do us any good, because as you just stated, um, there's limited ways of getting out of this county. And as we all know, we're gonna get cut off if we have a predominant system in here. So, uh, and we know it, we've had it over and over again. So it's not new to us, but in the case with a lot of people who've not been through this or they sit home and wanna wait and see. That's not the thing to do. And we don't play games with them. We don't say, we, it's better to shelter in place if you can, but the truth is, we tell them when the time, time is to get out. We're not kidding. We're telling them to get out and get out now. I mean, isn't that correct? I mean, we do talk about that.
It's absolutely, uh, true and, um, And um, the fact of, and that kind of goes back to our evacuation plan um for Brunswick County. Um, our plan is targeted towards, obviously, we don't control the municipalities.
Right.
Unfortunately, every part of our coastline is municipalities. So um, we control the unincorporated piece. But our, our fact there is to make sure we're communicating the data, the bat- the, the driving force. While we may be evacuate, calling for an evacuation of unincorporated Brunswick County. So we provide them that information and we hope that they follow suit. Um, but, and then also back to the other side, um, with our residents having evacuation plans, taking it upon themselves to go. They haven't called for it, but I think I'm going to go ahead and head out. This, this isn't, isn't looking well. Um, but the, the point you made about us asking or advising there being a declaration for a mandatory evacuation. Cause there's three people that can call the evacuation, the governor, the board chair, or municipality authority.
Yeah, we don't, we don't have that ability unless we have what a uh a nuclear.
Well, we, for a countywide, if it's nuclear, we can, we can um kind of go outside that. But for a tropical event, those three people is listed in our plan, have those authorities. Um, and then, so the problem is zone A right on the coast. That's our biggest threat for surge. Um, we're going to be asking them to leave when it looks like it does outside. And unfortunately, people are going to go, ah, it'll turn, we're good. We, you know, we're thirty-six hours away from potential landfall. Cause our target is always to have people out of harms way into a safe location before the tropical storm force men's arrive. But if zone A doesn't act, then we call for right movement in zone B. And then eventually zone C is it, if it gets to that point and they've all waited, now we have all three zones trying to use our roads. There's, there's nothing we can do about it. We, I, I believe, this is your emergency management director speaking. I believe that if people, if everybody involved followed the times, time march. Our road systems wouldn't be incapable of handling that. It's just the fact that if you dump sixty thousand people or more into our roadways in a matter of an hour. There's just no way. And we all know depending on the size of the storm, South Carolina is evacuating, Myrtle Beach, North Myrtle, Wilmington, Jacksonville. They're all buying from the same roadways out to ninety-five. So um, our staggered evacuation is the way we choose, have chosen to go after evacuation. And that we feel that's the best way for us to, to accomplish that.
Yes.
Anything else, Mr.?
No, I'm just saying, yeah, I, that's what, you said it better than that, that's, that's exactly right.
So we've already been, you know, moving back to the list, we're already working with Amber and Megan. Um, I believe we've already sent some stuff out pushing ready Brunswick. Cause we're still, I mean, we're a little over a week away from the height of hurricane season. Um, so we're still pushing that message to get more and more people onto our system. Uh, standardize and educate our Web E O C uh procedure. We've made some major updates to our, to our platform. We require, and this recommendation was on recommendation by our county attorney. We wanted to make everybody that has access sign in twice a year to keep, you know, knowledge of their username, their password, et cetera. And that's across the board. That's all our partners, municipalities, et cetera, internal departments included. But based on that recommendation, it, when you sign in, it says you need to do that four times a year. So once a quarter, we ask that everybody signs in because we have moved to a, a vision utilizing Web E O C. To a more day to day process. We're starting to get more, more traction with resource requests, resource requests from both internal and external partners. That want to utilize some of our equipment, be it a message board, needing water for an event, et cetera. Um, I, we have one department that's already put in a request for next year. Um, for our health and safety, our health and wellness uh expo. Uh, our risk, risk managers very proactive and much appreciated. Um, so with that, working with them, we've had, had multiple uh trainings. I think we're probably in the neighborhood of um six or seven in persons that we had. And then we also recorded it and it's online in the Web E O C system where anybody can go back in that system and see that training. We uh worked with the state emergency management just this past week to talk about. Um, recovery activities and resource requests, because they've made some changes in their system as well. Um, but we had um pretty good stance of, of folks that came and sat in with us last Friday. Uh, to hear from the state when we talking about, I, you know, P A, public assistance and documentation. And then the resource request process. So that, like I said, some of these have already, are already in motion. Um, and some have already been accomplished. So we get to short term, we're talking that six to eighteen months. Um, this, some of this is where we run into the support I mentioned first off. Is the fact of looking at funding of additional high water rescue and low draft water craft. I believe um, we have a couple low draft water crafts across the county. But we're talking stuff that can get very, in very shallow water, airboats, dawn boats, things like that. Where we can get into those tight areas um and conduct rescues. Uh, we have a pretty good support of larger vessels, either between the sheriff's office, some of our fire departments. Um, our swift water team and the coast guard when they're uh here assisting. Uh, so those two items or classes, items or things that we recognize that we need to look at additional funding in the future. Design a budget for storm related recreational center uh shelters. This came up there in our after action uh meeting, I think it was our initial meeting, we talked about shelters. Um, right now, we're utilizing schools in our senior centers. All those have activities that um, one of the big things after a storm is to get schools back open. So that parents can get back to work, get our community back in motion. Um, that affects us when we start talking about that mid and long term sheltering. Um, if we have folks in there, in our shelters. Um, the recommendation here was maybe we could look at multipurpose buildings, larger multipurpose buildings rated. In uh generator backup, storerooms large enough for shelter supplies at, within our, our parks. Um, some of the parks we talked about were, just to mention one or two was uh Northwest Park. Potentially um something in here in the middle, Town Creek. Um, what's the park up on two eleven, uh Lockwood Folly area up there? Um, and maybe a third, but you know, this would allow us to have county owned structures that don't rely on, don't have other programs per se. That can be used day to day for sporting, recreational stuff for parks and rec. But also doubled for potential polling places for elections. Um, plethora of ideas there, but uh that was brought up as a, a potential uh correction for our sheltering problems. I will add, um, I looked at the numbers today. We have the ability, based on our three current shelters we use, we are sheltering less than one percent of our population. It's actually point seven percent of our population. That, and that's not because we don't have the, the will, the want, the drive. It's just we don't have the facilities that are rated to support risk shelter. And I say risk sheltering, that's when the wind's going to blow and all that. We have some more capacity for host shelter when it's a rain event, et cetera, but uh risk sheltering is our, our shortfall. Uh, conduct tabletop exercises for shelter activation and evacuation timing. Um, those are in the works now. Um, one of the big, probably the first one that's going to come out is our evacuation tabletop. Um, so that we can pull in our municipal partners um and, and our other agencies and support, V O A Ds, et cetera. Uh, to run a tabletop and, and test our plan as it sets, test our municipal plans uh as well. And to ensure that all our plans flow well together. I will add that we have done a lot of discussion with Ballhead Island and their evacuation plan. Um, it's, a lot of their evacuation plan depends on how the seas are coming across, utilizing their uh, the uh. The ferries, so we, you know, we'll, we'll see, but they do have a plan. We helped go through that plan to make sure that it was updated and uh, and ready for them. And everybody's feeling like they're in a really good spot with Ballhead's plan. Develop, develop uh shelter supply pod strategies uh with Brunswick County Sheriff's Office currently. We have three, four, three shelter trailers that have cots, um blankets. Personal hygiene kits, all ready to go. They're all sheltered with, or stocked with the two smaller ones that are actually over at building C. Hold a hundred cots plus blankets and et cetera, as already mentioned. Um, our larger uh shelter trailer down in Shalote has a hundred and fifty cots, well, actually it's a hundred and seventy cots. Um, cause we do, we have those new cots we purchased, plus the larger uh cots, medical, medical cots. So um, we have those and enough supplies, but working with the sheriff's office. Um, and the use of their heavy equipment, we are ready, we have all way, we always have, excuse me. Our water uh M R Es, other supplies that get distributed out. One of the shortfalls we have there is the ability to store it on grounds at schools. We've, we uh haven't been able to make any headway there. That would be one of the benefits to the rec centers. We could build that in that construct, design that into the construction. So that it's all there twenty-four seven. Um, update the, one of the min- things that were mentioned by the vector control group was update their plan to enhance communications. And um, their standards for what they use in their spraying. I believe they're already well on their way of making those corrections as well. And then our long term. Um, as you know, st- uh federal funding is maybe here today, might not be here tomorrow. Um, we did receive some somewhat positive information from the state this year. Um, just uh about a week and a half ago now, from the director. When he was talking about those federal pass through monies, it looks like they're going to con- they've done some budget changes at the state. To take their uh demand off those federal funds, so they can push more federal funds down. Um, it's something that uh was somewhat positive, but you just never know until they, they truly come out with those funding. Documents and so forth. So we, we look at securing this, some of this funding, both from feds and state. Uh, to help work on these, these projects, partner with D O T to complete talk, you know, and this is not just E M. But Brunswick County as a whole partner with D O T to complete targeted ditch clearing and culvert resizing as appropriate. Complete a floodplain study and update our mitigation plan. We are in the middle of the updating of our southeast North Carolina mitigation plan. If you should have about hmm, week and a half, two weeks ago, we had a public forum that was online. Controlled by contractor, the state hired, um, mixed reviews on how that went. But they're, they're in the process of collecting data and updating this, the regional plan. I would like to see us go to a more targeted Brunswick County specific plan. Um, so that's in, in a long term. And then we've already talked about the multipurpose shelters or retrofitting of our senior centers with permanent generators. That's one of, that's always our shortfall there. Um, when we expand outside of one or the couple of the senior centers we do use. Um, is just the uh generator support on those facilities. One thing we also, and this, we're coming to an end, and I apologize for being long-winded. Thanks um for the opportunity, but one of the things we did uh do during this process was reach out to Steve Pfaff. And his team at the National Weather Service and talk to them about what their challenges were when they were forecasted this. And some of the things that, that kind of came to the top of this was their messaging proved problematic. Because of the short, short notification window they had, the information that was available just due to how the storm was, was uh developing. Um, they saw a significant amount of that and that lack of messaging causing uncertainty. We had some municipality and, and I'm saying the whole southeast area that was being affected here in the state. But they had some school systems that didn't cancel school. You had some agencies that didn't keep, close offices, not saying that's bad, wrong, or indifferent. But those were the challenges, some canceled, some didn't, some closed, some didn't. So there was, you know, some inconsistency across the messaging that the, the weather service was trying to put out. Proximity of the develop, this thing developed right off our coast. It sat there and meandered for a couple of days. And to be honest, this, the original center of circulation went exactly where they said it was going. It went to Georgetown. If you watch it, all that stuff happened because another low developed and the original center went to Georgetown.
That's, yeah, did.
So um, the problem was when it created that additional low. It brought in a bunch of rain and as the weather service mentioned and I of, don't, let's see. They termed it as a ten mile wide fire hose of storms into the Cape Fear region. That was a quote from N W S staff, and that's exactly what happened. That relentless flow, onflow, onshore flow of water and rain that, that just kept dumping. Um, and that was totally unexpected. It was nowhere in the forecast. Um, the scale of the event, what ended up happening, just it just didn't go with any of their modeling. So that is driving them to change to, to their um, a different model. And we're already seeing that in our, our forecast from them now. They're utili- utilizing this new rainfall piece and it's basically giving us the most likely rainfall amount. Along with the plausible worst case scenario. So would we have, would it have changed anything we did? I would have to say probably would. If someone told me we're getting twenty inches of rain in Southport, but you know, up through Bolivia. Yeah, we would have went somewhere, but we were told it was five to eight inches over the next three days. So we, we adjusted, we responded, we're, we're correcting our, our pro- our uh concerns. So in conclusion, it revealed that we're both resilient, but yet have vulnerabilities here in Brunswick County. Most of these we already know of. The strategies outlined in this report require support across all departments, uh funding partners, elected leadership, et cetera. We all have stake in this game or in this process. And so that we can move forward, have more proactive planning across all disciplines. And ensure that we mitigate as many of the risks pre-storm uh to protect our community as a whole. Questions?
We thank you, David. I know that there's a bunch of questions up here. I'll start here, right?
Start at the end and go this way?
I'm sorry.
Okay. First of all, thank you. That's a lot of information and I've actually got here early today and I was glad to see this on the table, so I've had a chance to skim it. A few comments and, and a few things I'm hoping we'll consider maybe adding into the final version. But um, I like what you said about they're going to give us the information on the possible worst case scenario. First thing I had written is just in general, always plan for worse than what is expected. I think that's just a good approach. If they predict a category two, plan for a category three. In terms of the, and I'm on page three of your printed document, but in terms of the percentage of people who say that they're registered for Ready Brunswick, et cetera. I, I, I would point out that the sample is skewed by people who were informed enough to know about this survey and fill it out. So I think those numbers are probably significantly lower than what is in here. Because in order to be in here, you had to actually know about this survey and take the time to answer thirty-four questions, which is a long survey. So I would have, I would assume that those no, number of people who know about this are probably substantially lower than what's recorded there. Almost skipped.
I will, if you don't mind, I will add that our current numbers of opted in residents in the Everbridge program. I will, if you don't mind, I will add that our current numbers of opted-in residents in the Everbridge program is approaching that fifty thousand mark. Um, so fifty thousand, about thirty, thirty-three, thirty-three percent, give or take a percent or two.
Individuals or households or?
That, that's a combination of both. Some, some register as a household because you can put multiple members under one, or if they, they register separately, but it is a uh is a combination, but I will add that we also, part of our contract with Everbridge is we have community connection. Um, which gives us basically the white pages, everybody's cell phone numbers and stuff, and that number is, is about a hundred and sixteen thousand um, numbers on top of that fifty. Some of them are redundant, but we are, we do have the capability to reach out and touch very large percentage of the county. And we do have WEA capabilities, so.
Well, that's a great segue and a lot of my comments are in the communication area and I think we did a great job, but I also think there are a lot of things we can learn from this storm. And Commissioner Thompson's probably aware of this. A lot of the places around the country will establish what's called a joint information center. And I don't know that we need to have a physical joint information center during an event because nineteen towns are not gonna send a member of their staff to our EOC to sit in there when they need to be in their town, but we could establish sort of a virtual type of joint information center and it would need to be spearheaded by the county and everybody else participating, but that would help ensure that we had the same message going out, that those relationships were established ahead of time. And I remember, and I thought it was an unfair criticism lobbed at one of our fire departments during the fire last year. Somebody was mad that the fire department was not updating their Facebook in a timely manner. Their people that updated their Facebook were out literally fighting a fire. But we could maybe work with all the fire departments and have a way to get them, all those people to get them that information. And I know we do it to a degree now, but the more streamlined we can make it and the more we can have that completely in place ahead of time, I think the better off we'll be. A couple of specific tactics I would encourage us, encourage us to look at, and we may already be doing them, but I'm gonna throw them out just in case. I'm a big believer in what I call owned media, which is media that we own and control, which would be our website. And I go back to Florence. I did a, I was chair there in Florence. I did a thirty-five or forty-five minute media interview about Florence. They put fifteen seconds of it on TV and went on to the next county. And so while the media is important, we can't rely on them because they cover a lot more than just Brunswick County. And if we could stream those things live on our own website and have you guys and our sheriff and our, our chair, whoever that is at that time, do daily video updates. I think New Hanover County did some of those in some other jurisdictions. That would give people a chance to hear from the people that they expect to hear from, not just something for them to read. So own media, of video briefing, if we have the ability to do that with what's going on. I'm guessing we probably have a nice, long list of misinformation that has been put out in past storms and we could pre-position responses to the same misinformation because it will come back in the next storm and, and staff may already have that, but you know, rather than wait for it to come out, go ahead and have it pre-positioned. Here's what people say, here's the truth. And one thing I've, I've learned recently is a lot of the billboard companies, especially the digital billboard companies, will donate space for emergency management uses. So that would be some groups that we could, you could reach out to, to get information out in a timely manner because they can update the digital billboards almost instantly. I like the Ready Brunswick Awareness Campaign. One thing I'd love to see are some specific metrics for how we measure the success of that, and I would think a couple might be sign, sign-ups for our email list, people that joined the opt-in to the program and we may want to consider doing our own mobile app just for emergency management. And sign-ups for that would be one because, and, and sign-ups for the sheriff, if we wanted to partner with them and just use theirs could be a, another metric. But that will give us something tangible, you know. Almost done here. We passed a resolution for legislative goals a while back and one of the things we advocated for was um, this may have been us, it may have been the RPO, but to advocate for state funding to clean, for drainage cleanup in the twenty counties that are under the Coastal Area Management Act. And I think I'll just reemphasize putting that as a legislative goal because there, if the state feels strongly enough about those twenty counties to regulate them, then they happen to own the roads and can, and clean the ditches. That's the place that they ought to put some funding. And one thing I had written down in my notes a year ago on this storm was make sure we have a clearer policy and process for when we decide to close the county offices and how we're gonna communicate that to our employees. I covered a lot there. Any questions? Could I throw a lot at you in a short time?
No, sir.
Thank you for everything you've done. It's all.
I, I will make, if you don't mind, I will make a comment about the JIC. Um, that is something that um we utilize heavily in our virtual stance during rep exercises. So it's very strongly set there. That should be a, and that's something that communications department's working with our other partners, something that um we can get with Megan and her team and, and bring that up. We actually have that, a designated area that was a FEMA recommendation um during our last exercise and in our design as if it holds. Um, we will have a JIC, designated JIC um room in our new EOC.
One, and just a thought that just occurred to me, um, a lot of our towns, probably most of our towns don't have a public information component on staff. So we need to make sure that their, um, I'd say manager and clerk, but also their mayor and mayor pro tem are aware of this. And every year, whoever the mayor pro tem and the mayor are, include them in our messaging on that because we don't need a mayor out there saying we don't have evacuation routes when we do, for instance.
Let me move this way. Pat, you have anything?
No, I was part of the committee along with the um, that did this, but I do uh agree with the uh having the shelters to not only to, for recreation and for um shelters for our citizens, but also, uh, you know, we're having to have these pods for our supplies when each of these shelters could store the supplies there and you wouldn't have to transport it through the storm. So um, I just think that that's a good way to move forward is to get these shelters built there. And then we don't use the schools and the schools don't cost as much. So I'm really supportive of that.
And thank you to the two commissioners who served on this committee as well.
That's what I was gonna bring up when I get to the meeting. Randy?
Uh, thank you. Um, David, thank you for uh kind of taking the lead on uh trying to pull all this together. And uh, and all the other task force members. I know that uh, uh, we, we had a number that were in and out uh during the uh, during the process of pulling this together. You know, it's been almost a year uh since this particular storm. And I do believe that if the same conditions occurred again, that our impact would probably be worse than what it was for this storm. Uh, in saying that, I also recognize that we need to spend a lot of time on our evacuation plan. Because normal traffic in Brunswick County today is uh i- is a pretty tough position for a lot of people to drive just to begin with. So you start putting that evacuation plan in place. I think there really needs to be a lot of education once that evacuation plan is developed to really push that because most people would tell you that no evacuation plan is gonna work with the normal traffic flow in many parts of our county today. Um, it is, uh, it's gonna be tough no matter what. Um, I will say that DOT did come to the table to begin with because they, they received a, a personal invite to, to do so and they showed up in full force. And as they did, I think we accomplished quite a bit in that particular meeting. I, I would like to make as a recommendation coming from this board to administration that there be a spin-off task force that's created. Um, including our stormwater engineer, our solid uh soil and water engineer, our invite DOT and our administration to come together to discuss these issues related to the co- uh culverts, the ditches, related to the uh seventeen and the elevation of seventeen and the way in which that uh, where we're cut off from that and the contributaries that flow to and from seventeen and some of our other major roads from one thirty-three. Um, all of those that were impacted to eleven. Um, eh, so that we have DOT at the table with us ongoing to work out these issues. Because be quite honest with you, um, you know, we may, we may say that, and I have actually seen some DOT crews out there working uh cleaning out certain ditches. But to be quite honest with you, in a year's time since the last storm, I don't think that we're any better off prepared today uh when it comes to water flow than we were a year ago. Uh, so I honestly believe that there needs to be a concentrated group that works on defining the maintenance process. Utili- you know, whenever DOT came to the table with us, I mean, they were talking about uh doing drone um overview evaluations uh of all the contributaries and um, and I, I just haven't seen that or heard that that's gone anywhere with our um, with, with any of our agencies to uh enhance things. I will say that the shelter figures and the population that can, that our shelters can, can ha- can handle um, being down around one percent or under one percent. Then I go over to the, as you mentioned, the pods and the cot. I don't know if my numbers add up right, but I don't know that our pod situation or a cot situation can even support the less than one percent.
Well, let me, let me clarify that. Our trailers that we, we utilize are a quick response. Very, very much similar into what
To support Red Cross or whoever comes in.
You know, a no notice event occurred this afternoon and we need to open up a shelter for some reason. We would just, we, we can handle that first hundred, hundred and twenty folks in any shelter. If we use our big trailer, it's a hundred and seventy people. And then we would backfill with additional cots that we have in the warehouse.
Okay. And the last thing I have on my list is, I know that uh me, um, a few years ago, we, we've forgotten the uh EMPG funding. I'd like to uh, for the board and for administration to reevaluate that. Um, if it even comes about.
Um, I, I don't wanna, you know, short, you know, jump into something with Steve. I mean, I've, in that report that um, we got from the, the state director from uh Director Ray, uh, the number, we had projected a couple of years ago that what we normally got, let's say it was fifty thousand dollars, it's, it's a little bit more than that years gone. Then last year it went to thirty-five because of a ten percent cut at the federal level. This year it was targeted to be somewhere in the twenties. Um, and then it was kinda, there was a decision made to back off of it this year. The other day, Ms. Director Ray led us to believe that the number that they're gonna push through due to the budgeting changes they done would be back to the thirty-five mark. So that, that's something I haven't had a chance to speak with, with the manager on, but it is on my.
So if we could just reevaluate the use of that again, um, and the avenue for
Just question, um, name off the people you said for your task force that you were suggesting.
Sure, I think so. Sure, I think someone from stormwater or engineering needs to be a part of it. I think our soil and water, uh, I'm not sure if he's a director or an administrator or what his actual title is. Um, but someone from so- uh soil and water, um, DOT needs to be at the table and then someone from administration to uh, because again, administration is the, the policy groups avenue to making sure something gets done by us staff.
Um, would it be useful to have one or two people who sit up here on that task force or leave, or you think it's more of a staff level?
I mean, I, I, I think if you're, you're looking for engagement, sure. I'm, I mean, I, I'm you know, DOT had some great ideas when they came to that particular meeting. The soil and mortar added to that and together that they were doing pretty good. You add engineering and, and um, and stormwater to that. Be quite honest with you, our problem here in the county deals with all these agencies that I just mentioned when it comes to the water and the flooding situations. And if we're going to figure out how to prevent it. Now, now you may want to add emergency management to this list. I don't know. That's totally up to y'all. But the folks that talk water and deal with water, you know, uh, are, are the ones that I want to see come together to try to come up with a, a, you know, some type of avenue forward. Cause if we, if we don't, we're just waiting for the next, you know.
The stolen water was swine.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, so.
I think that, that could be a very useful task force. I would recommend if we do it, have two commissioners and make sure that at least two of the three transportation bodies that we sit on are represented. So
Oh, that'd be good.
That way, um, you've got some combination of MPO, RPO and GSAT, it's two of those three. And I would also recommend inviting our legislators and Congressman Rouser's staff as ex officio participants. They may not show up, but at least send them the notices so they, they get in, in the invitations. Because ultimately, if it's DOT funding, it's gonna go through the legislature or it's gonna be a federal grant, one of the two. So I could support that.
As could I. Marty?
I've been taking notes. I think one thing is cool was uh, you know, this was no notice event. We drill for no notice events as well as notice events. And so this is where you really saw a no notice event kick in. And uh, what was interesting to find was a lot of the people that were in the EOC drilled together. And so it wasn't a new thing for them. There wasn't a real panic. It was like, okay, how do we fill these holes? How do we fit these gaps? How do we get this information out? How do we do all these kinds of things? And that being said, being able to be in the EOC, I think I was in the EOC each day and maybe some other people were as well. But the point being was I watched how it happened and it was a lot of things like, I think we had over two hundred roads that were initially shut down because of the flooding. But then, within uh twenty-four hours, it dropped to about half that. And then you could keep on seeing it drop. And I saw the, you know, the phone activity where people would call and say, hey, you know, is this, is this accurate? Is, can we get through here? And people were very expeditious and getting right back to them and saying, yeah, this is open or else you can do this. A lot of times SHP, State Health Patrol was right there or, or, you know, we'd have somebody that could be able to say, yes, we can verify that this is active or it's not active or whatever. Um, you know, so I think the drills, I like the drills, the no notice, and I like it when you really heap a lot of stuff, because that's what happens is that you heap a lot of stuff on us, you know, you end up throwing all these different things at us that just gets overwhelming and then figure out a plan is really great because whenever you come up with a real thing, it's kind of like you shift to that default aspect of how do we work the plan and make that plan a reality. Um, so I like the drills. The other thing is, um, you know, it's a great idea and I'm not really trying to negate it. But the reality is that if we're gonna build buildings, the, the Wacomal building itself was like, how much? Seven million dollars or better?
Close to it.
That was hardened. That's hardened with a generator. And so the thing about it is, we have looked at from the liaison committee with the schools of the new schools having hardened facilities internal to them, such as the gyms. That wouldn't necessarily uh, uh hamper the operation of the schools because you would have an area that could be utilized and would be hardened to use as a shelter. The secondary aspect of it is you've got the senior center. So once you get past the initial hit and you get back to kind of recovery aspect, you can start shifting them to the senior centers. And the senior centers, we're hardening them as we go and um, the coast just down the street, that is already hardened. Um, it's not being used as shelters. It doesn't have a generator capability to it, but that's something, as I understand, we've discussed this. I wasn't in the meeting, but we were discussing aspect of having that. So it will be uh enabled with a generator. Um, so that aspect of having the schools and then shifting, you know, to the senior centers at least as a short term until later on, but the aspect of putting in the regional uh facilities and the, there's a great jo- idea. But when you're gonna be spending tens of millions of dollars for each one of these sites, it's gonna be very expensive. Um, the other thing about it is we've got a lot of areas that have private property with drainage situations and it can be a variety of things. But you know, when the summertime, you can look and that can, you can look right now, you can see if there's any foliage on the trees or not. And you know that there's those areas of waterlogged right now. And that can be anything from debris that's in there. There can be some type of uh, an issue that has blocked it. It could be uh, inter- It could be interlocking dams with beavers. We've always had a beaver program, so it could be any of that. Another issue that I don't think was brought up that needs to be established somehow is that when we have hundreds of thousands of people relocate during the season and they go inland to Charlotte or wherever they go, you know, Greensboro, Raleigh, whatever. What I have encountered is they come back immediately like the tide and they want to get back into that vacation place because they spent a lot of money to do it. Well, how do you notify them and say, don't come back? You know, that, that's a thing that I think we need to have a consideration perspective on because I had to deal with this for years where individuals would, would immediately be back and the properties or the beaches weren't open. You couldn't get back on. There was no sewage or no power or there was some kind of issue. And so you couldn't get on the island. And then what happens is the tourists are saying, well, what do we do? Well, there's no place for them to stay either because the shelters might've been full or hotels were full and then they're sitting there going, well, gee whiz, what do I do now? How do I get back? And those are, and also what we find is you very well know, and I'm not telling you anything you don't know because you do. But like the Waukamaw, there's a delay of twenty four, forty eight hours at least for its swell. So individuals that are trying to get back in immediately from evacuation, they could get through it, but then twenty four, forty eight hours later, they can't, their same roadways are not active and they're not available anymore. So tourists don't know these things. And so how do we notify them? I don't know. And the other thing about it is, you know, this was a no nor warning event. I mean, people that say things, I mean, you know, we looked at where the flooding's got, we've got the web EOC, we can do some projections regarding flooding. But you know, the thing was, if you look at Winnaba, that thing fell in. There's nothing around it. There was no, there was no runoff. There was it was a tidal area. We couldn't get it fixed because it was a tidal area. And people were stuck on that highway. We couldn't even get the median open. And then we were trying to get a lane that would be open on the opposite way, but we couldn't even get them across the median because it was still flooded. And it was an interaction between emergency management and NC DOT to be able to use our, we had our, whatever you call them, cones and, and barrels, which I actually helped load. And the thing is, so we, we actually worked hand in hand with NC DOT to be able to try to make that a reality. Plus trying to figure out where all the people were stranded and trying to get them food and water because they were stuck. This was a no notice event and I don't think that's going to be unique. We may have other ones, you know. So the thing is, I cannot say enough about how impressed I was with the folks that were involved in the operation. And, and it's like, you know, you thank people and you're going to leave somebody else out. But everybody, I mean, it was like a big family and they worked together in concert. And to see it, it was just, it was amazing to watch because there was no panic. It was just they were working the problem. They had a problem. They identify the problem. They collaborate together. They get that problem fixed. If it was like trying to take the Bolivia site, the Bolivia school and get it into a shelter, immediately you had Joe Carino and others with the Sheriff's Office running down there to establish communications capabilities and everything else. So I mean, and not like that, you've got redundancy level at, at great levels because the thing is even have Starlink right now. Because Starlink is out there that you can establish communication links for the online capabilities and everything. So, you know, I, I have to tell you, it was really good and people just, you know, one thing about it is they work until they can't. They, you know, they just work until there's, you, you talk to them, they've been there twelve hours, fourteen hours. They just, you can't get them to quit because they are so passionate about trying to be, I guess paternalistic with respect to the people that live here and try to take care of them. And in saying that, I would put this group, this was in the EOC and there was involvement in this thing up against anyone, anywhere in this entire country. Because the truth is, I've never seen anybody to the degree of professionalism, the passion, the paternalism perspective where they are so concerned about the welfare of other people, trying to make sure they get the message out and they take care of the people and try to work that situation. And it's not just a momentary thing and they don't do it for any kind of attaboys or any kind of acclaim. They just do it because that's the way they are wired. They're good people. So in saying that, thank you. I, I think we'll always identify areas where there's shortfalls and that's going to be true with anything in nature, anything in life. But the reality is, we're going to continue to refine this and make it even better than it is. But I think y'all did an outstanding job where I sit. So thank you for your, for your service and thank you everybody involved with it. So.
Thank you.
That's all I have, sir.
And if, if I may, most of the things I had in mind have already been stated and asked. Number one, thank you for putting this all together. I appreciate all the hard work that you guys have done and Pat, Randy as well on this task force. So thank you to everybody involved. I, I think our number one way to go about this is stormwater management. I agree with Randy's take on continuing with a task force and with all the personnel that he recommended. So I'm all for that. I think we need to look at stormwater management countywide. I, I think we, we have to try to put pressure. I mean, four of the five of us are on transportation committees in this county. And we need to absolutely try to put pressure on DOT. I know they're crying poverty because of Hurricane Helene in, in the western part of the state and the tens of billions of dollars in damage. But I don't want them to forget us either because that happened within, what, ten days of PTC eight, Helene hit. We were instantaneously forgotten.
We were.
It, it was ridiculous. But we need to get on DOT to come up with some kind of a funding source to clean the ditches, to clean the tributaries, to keep the water flowing. One of our biggest problems is it keeps backing up. It, it just can't keep up. Whereas if they were cleaned, even every couple of years, I can't remember the last time I saw a DOT crew out there cleaning out a tributary. That water's got to flow and flows, you know, without any restrictions. So I think that's where we need to concentrate and the county as well. We need to come up with a stormwater plan and how are we going to move this water? It's as the gentleman, he left. As the gentleman who said the five finger thing he did, he was a hundred percent right. Those, those tributaries, those streams, rivers all need to be clean. So that, I'll get off of my soapbox because we've been going at this for about an hour and ten minutes just on this subject, but I know we have a couple of more questions right here.
Not questions, just if, from a communication perspective, if we only did one thing from a communication perspective, to me, it would be getting as many people as possible, getting information directly from us. Everything else to me is window dressing, but the more people get it from us and the less they get from people sharing the one model that shows a cat five hitting us when there's not even a storm, the better off we'll be because. So I think that's just from a communication perspective. And I would like to see this discussion after every major event happen at these meetings. I think this has been good. We need to, there's a major event, we need to always do an after action and it always needs to be on this agenda. And final thing is if we start lobbying, which we need to, on getting funding to, for drainage management and ditch cleanup in the Kama area, there are nineteen other counties we need to get on board with that as well.
Anybody else have anything? David, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, David.
Very comprehensive and we appreciate it.
Appreciate all your support.
Thank you, sir. Steve? Administrative report.
Yes, sir. Thank you. You have before you a proposed travel policy rewrite. And this is really a consolidation of, we've had some travel in finance policies and also in our HR policy to get it codified in, in one place. So people and department directors don't have to go back and forth between different policies. A couple of, of real substantive changes were highlighted here. There are now so many North Carolina statewide conferences that are held in Myrtle Beach. And we have a different policy for out of state travel, even though Myrtle Beach is, say, closer than Raleigh or Cherokee. And we're just asking for purposes of the policy that we designate Ory County as, as in-state for the approval process. And if you wonder why so many North Carolina public organizations are now going to Ory County, their, their response is that nowhere on the North Carolina coast has a facility as large as Myrtle Beach does. And that, that's why they're going there. We have a clarification on when people need to get car rental insurance. We recommend that overnight stays be authorized only if it's more than fifty miles from Brunswick County, unless you're a conference organizer or a board member or, or someone, not just an attendee at the conference, but someone related to the, the operation of that conference.
Can I ask one question about that bullet? Like obviously I live ten minutes from downtown Wilmington. For me, that's different. But for Randy driving to downtown Wilmington, when he lived in Sunset Beach, would be like me staying in Myrtle Beach, which is over an hour away. How does that play in if somebody's driving from Calabash to Wrightsville Beach, even though it's fifty miles from the government center, it's over an hour from their house?
Because we don't control where people live, we've measured the fifty miles from here. However, there is an exception in the policy whereby I, the deputy county managers, the sheriff, the register of deeds or the chairman of the board can make exceptions if, if they need to be. But the, but the fifty miles is measured from Bolivia. And, and just to be honest, the only two places that we think people are likely to go that are more than fifty miles from Bolivia are Wilmington and Wrightsville Beach. Most of the other places that conferences are held are, are further anyhow. Just, there's some general changes saying who's responsible for administration of the, the policy and whatnot. And there are also, we did not have a written policy about reimbursement for use of personal vehicles for travel. And that had led to some directors approving, if, if somebody just said, I, I've got a county car, but I don't want to take it. Or motor pool cars available. I don't want to take it and they use their own car. Some directors would approve that at the IRS mileage rate. And some directors would say, no, if you don't take a county car, we're just not going to pay you. So a number of months ago, we administratively put in a policy that if there was voluntary use of a vehicle, that we would use the IRS charitable rate, which is currently set at fourteen cents a mile. And just as a point of reference, at current gasoline prices, if you have a vehicle that gets twenty one miles a gallon, that's about the break even point as far as fuel alone. And we're asking you to, to codify that into policy, but several of you have had discussions with me about whether or not you think that's adequate. And we certainly, as you go into discussion, we can talk about that further. Again, this is the, the policy. We have it with the strike throughs where stuff was moved around here. But these are really the, the major changes proposed.
Mr. Chairman?
Let me just, are we going to continue with that absurd number of fourteen cents a mile or are we going to?
That's where I was going.
Well, well, that's, that, that's the number that's in it at present, but as I said, we, we have some alternatives we could discuss if the board would, would like us to.
If one of our employees is going for training and there is no county vehicle available and they have to use their own car, or if they voluntarily, because they bring their wife with them and we can't put family members in our vehicles, if they voluntarily use their vehicle to go to, I don't care, Pickers, New Bern, because there's a training there. I, I think if, if they're going to be taking their wife with them so that in the evening after the training all day, they go to dinner, they get to sightsee a little, do a little shopping, whatever they do, we could at least cover their gas at a reasonable rate, not just exactly a court, you know, being reimbursed for the cost of one gallon of gas. So like you said, your car's got to get twenty one miles to the gallon just to break even. There's still wear and tear on the vehicle and they are going for training purposes. I would like to see us at least double it. Could we give them like thirty cents a mile? I, I don't know how everybody else feels. It's just fourteen cents a mile. It's barely breaking. That's silly to me.
Mr. Chairman, I think we ought to do half the IRS rate. I think that would be it. Plus, I don't think they need to go with the MapQuest numbers. Because the thing is, you and I have been places where you had to drive five, ten miles to go to a restaurant because it was like nowhere there. And so you had to do it. So there needs to be some latitude with respect to beyond just what the actual mileage is from start and end. Because they're, they're putting it down.
Well, we're GPSing from this building to wherever the location is, right?
What, what we generally would do when the mileage is, is reported, whichever rate we're using, if, if it's within ten or fifteen percent of, of what GPS would show, we allow it. If, say, somebody goes to Raleigh and back and they report four hundred and fifty miles, then we're going to say, wait a minute, that's way, way, that's. But if incidental additional mileage, we, we will pay for. And if, if we do set a rate other than the fourteen, something like half of the IRS rate, something that we could write in, that we could just adjust it when the IRS rate changed, rather than having a fixed number that we'd have to come back to the board is what we, we'd prefer. But I want to make sure you understand if, if a, if we don't have a vehicle available for an employee in the course of business, then they automatically get the full IRS rate. It's only if a vehicle.
Seventy three or four cents?
I, I think.
Okay.
Set seventy at present and that gets adjusted by the IRS's cost bounce up and down, though they were mostly bounce up.
Yeah, there's no options. So, yeah.
Yeah, I think I would support something higher than the fourteen cents, but not the full rate, just because I think I'm gathering that your intent was to discourage people from voluntarily using their own personal vehicle just to get a large mileage reimbursed.
Well, it's, it's more than that because when our fleet's available, our operating cost per mile is well under the IRS rate. So we're, we're trying to get the most bang for the taxpayers buck. But, but our, our true operating cost is certainly more than half of the IRS rate. So we, we could live with half of the IRS rate and that should still encourage people to drive county vehicles when suitable.
Pat, you got anything? Randy, you over to that?
No, I'm fine with the half rate as well.
And the other thing we've got.
In form of motion, I support it.
The other thing we've got is like the sheriff and the chairman and the manager, the, the deputy managers, they can waive it if there's an issue. Plus, you know, like they've got a situation where somebody has to stay over, but they're not on the board where they can, they can actually look at it on a case by case basis. So I think that's fine.
Does that require a motion? Or a recommendation?
It would probably be best for you to just make a motion so it's clear that, that you ask us to change the mileage.
I'll second. And the motion is to adopt the plan with the one change being, just to make sure I'm understanding that the alternative reimbursement is, is to not be the charitable rate, but to be half of the regular rate?
Yes, sir.
I'll second that.
So I have a motion. I have a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Done.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. All right. Madam Clerk, well, I don't even think I need you for this one. We have a board appointment for the Nursing Home and Adult Care Home Community Advisory Committee. And a name has been submitted of Ms. Barbara Gigante to that said board, Nursing Home and Adult.
Move approved.
Williams and Thompson. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Ms. Gigante. Moving on. Any, is there any other business or informal discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I have one item and this is something that came up at the Wilmington MPO and I wanted to share it with this board. There's no decision of any kind that I'm asking. It's no decision of any kind that I'm asking for, but I wanted to make y'all aware of it. And I know GSATs has had some discussions that are similar in nature. But the MPO has created a subcommittee to discuss alternative funding for some major projects. It was spurred by the Cape Fear Memorial Bridge, which and they presented us with every alternative funding option available. And it really came down to only two that would actually help move a project. One of them is the hated T word, a toll. They, you know, a rental car tax is not going to build you a billion dollar bridge. It's just, there's not enough money there. The other one is one that would, if it were to proceed down the road and if we were to continue investigating it, would require eventually a motion of this board to put a sales tax referendum on the ballot. Again, I'm I'm just asking, all I'm going to ask y'all for today is, do you have enough interest for the MPO to continue exploring it? But here's on high level terms, how it would work. Instead of just being for Cape Fear Memorial Bridge, it would benefit, it could benefit multiple projects in Brunswick County. The ones that I have thrown out are Cape Fear Bridge, Carolina Bays Parkway and two eleven widening is kind of the big three. If we needed to add another one, I would suggest maybe Midway Road widening because it ties right into two eleven. That puts one project in the Wilmington MPO area, one in GSATs and one in the Cape Fear RPO. The way I'm envisioning is that the tax, if the voters decided to approve it, would be a temporary tax. And when those projects were done, it would sunset and they could reauthorize it for future projects. The way we've discussed it, money generated in Brunswick County would go to Brunswick County's projects. New Hanover County would have its own referendum and hope, it'd be kind of challenging if we passed it and they didn't or vice versa. Because the bridge spans two counties, but the other projects are here. And ultimately, you know, be letting the voters decide, are they willing to vote for that one cent temporary tax to expedite these major projects? There's one that they're looking at in Mecklenburg County now for transit, and I think they estimated forty percent of the projected revenue would come from tourists. Again, those are just pie in the sky numbers. But what the MPO wanted to know was, is there enough interest here and at least looking at this for them to continue exploring it before they put any any time and sweat equity into exploring it? It would obviously involve, you know, getting GSATs, and I know our director's spoken to the GSATs director and the RPO director. Because this would have to be something that the county was unified on. And I know you guys have discussed a toll option for this might allow be a replacement for that, depending on what the revenues would be. And I don't know. That's, again, we're just in the early stages. It's just an idea at this point, but they wanted us to bring it back to our boards and see what people think.
You know, I I I would, I would love to see a white paper on it. And the white paper, also, I would hope that when when the white paper was produced to to provide additional insight and guidance, that the the funds that would be generated to ensure that the entire county population understood it, that it would be equally equally distributed to the project zones and not come in for one particular project to be. Even though it's Brunswick County project, it wouldn't be for one project. It would be equally distributed amongst. You could say the three, three entities governing. That that way at least everyone in every part of the county could be assured that there was going to be some portion of the funds that they are contributing to is actually spent on where they are residing.
And and I've made the point to to your point, I've made the point multiple times that for this to pass countywide in Brunswick County, it cannot just be about a project up in one area. It's got to be.
Yeah, as long as.
The only thing that could affect exact equal distribution would be project cost. But that's something I'd, I could, I would ask them to, because if one project costs twice as much as another, and Carolina Bays may be the most expensive. I don't know.
And and I'm, you know, I'm almost, I'm almost sure it will be by the time that, you know, that that we realize that it's coming, but you know, the project cost, as long as it it's again equally distributed, whatever the project cost is. Because it's just like you said, there's going to have to be other sources of revenue that come in to support the construction.
And what I'll ask them, if you think of anything after this meeting that you would want back in that report, let me know and I will pass it along. We're just in the very early stages. There would be some legislative action required because there's got to be a mechanism to put to bring the money in and distribute it, and that's something that's, it might require creation of a three county authority that this county would be appointing people to. But the legislation could be very specific in how it works. And to me, one of the most important things is you know the money's going to these projects and then when it's done, we'd you'd have, you get to vote again for it to go to future projects. I'd love to hear what people down here think.
I'm not a fan. I mean, you know, you had already explained it to me, so. I I'm not a fan of adding to sales tax that affects your everyday living.
And it would not affect groceries, is my understanding.
Yes, I remember you telling me that. But, you know, every time you go buy new pair of socks, you know, it it's going to be affected. I think at the end of the year, if you were to tally up what that one percent is, it's significant dollars. And it's not just property owners paying for it, although I do realize the tourist would be a big chunk of it. I get it. Every time you go in a restaurant and stop for lunch, you stop for a cup of coffee, you're going to be paying into this. I'm not a big time fan of it. I get the gist. I know DOT General Assembly will not do anything to raise the gas tax. They are adamant. That's just not going to happen. Where future funding comes from for any DOT project, when we have a billion dollar plus bridge that has to be done, I don't know where this money's coming from. Two eleven, what the this phase one is two hundred and forty-five million.
That was the largest project ever in Brunswick County.
Right, right. And when you look at phase two and then phase three, which is the killer part of it, it that's well over a billion dollar project. You know, they throw around this billion dollar word like it's monopoly money. It it's scary. I I would have to really sit down and figure out like my household, what would it cost me? You know, over and above my 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 gas that I'm using, because I'm still paying gas tax every time I put, and I do a lot of driving. I mean, I fill my tank two to three times a week. And it's not a small tank. It's a good sized vehicle. I I'd have to weigh it all out, but I'm not, I'm not saying I'm a hundred percent opposed. I just, I need to have the numbers.
And all we would be doing is letting the voters decide if they.
Oh, I agree.
And every family would have to decide if they want it.
I agree.
You know, I I think people made it pretty clear. They don't like a toll on the bridge up our way.
Yep.
And this is really the only other option currently available to.
And they're going to hear it again with the Carolina Bays if they ever figure out which route they're going to go with and.
I agree with you. I'm not a hundred percent bought. I need to know more information, more data. I'm not supportive of any increase with tax that is just never comes back down. It keeps going up.
Right. It it's not going to sunset.
So I'm not opposed to the toll if it's absolutely needed. Because if it's just like the Carolina Parkway, if it's built and people don't want to get in the traffic, they're going to use it. So they they'll pay the toll, just like when I go to Charlotte, I pay the toll because I don't want to get in the traffic in Monroe. So.
Use tax. If you use it, you pay for it. If you don't.
It's the same way with the bridge. We have three different ways they can get to Wilmington. Either they take the long route or they take one of the bridges. So if you make it a toll, then people's going to pay just to get there quicker. So.
Well, you know, the thing about is, I went to school in Charleston. I can't even afford to go to Charleston now because, you know, your sales tax down there is so high. And Ori County, well, if you're going to buy something in Ori County and you're going to pay nine percent sales tax, and I think it's seven percent in in New Hanover, it's a big difference in it. And the thing is, I think it to digress. My uncle was the first secretary of the Department of Transportation, which changed from State Highway Commission back in the nineteen seventies. And I remember he was initially in the General Assembly and then he became Secretary for the Department of Transportation, which is new. And I always heard the state is taking care of it. And we were the good road state. We're no longer the good road state. And all I get is excuses. That's all I hear. Or I hear, no, that's all I hear. And and I've been on these boards you guys are on, and we go through this choreographed bee dance of trying to do every single thing they tell us. And then we get all those dots connected and we bring it up there to them and everything, and they say, no, we don't have the money. And we say, why did we do all this? Well, we don't have the money. Okay, so here's the thing. This sounds good because I think it's a, I think it's a shiny object because here's the deal. We can say, well, two thirds or one third or whatever's going to be paid for by the tourists. Yeah, we can say that. But what we're doing is we're opening the door because it'll never sunset. And now that if you want any improvements done from here on out, it's going to have to be a local sales tax. That means your sales tax is going to be eventually ten percent. Because what's going to happen is the state knows it works. So if you want the improvements, you can keep on playing this game of doing every single thing you've done with the MPO and the RPOs and GSATs. And then they're going to keep saying no. And then what's going to happen is your alternative is you're going to pay for it at a local level. And no, and I and I personally, I'm tired of this because, you know, the Fed gets away with saying, okay, we're not going to fund it anymore. So they're going to give it to the state. Guess what the state's doing? They're handing it off to us. Where are we going to hand it off to? A taxpayer? So no, I'm not. I'm not now. If the if if this is a referendum and everybody really knows what they're dealing with and there's no way in this world, we're going to get two eleven wide, which should have been widened twenty years ago. Or these other highways that should have been put in, which they're not doing. As long as the informed public votes for it, that's one thing, but I think it's opening the door for precedent that'll continue. And before you know it, we'll be strapped for a lot of the dagum improvements through our local option sales tax.
And I don't like either option. To me, that's where I'm at. I don't like either option, but I think that, you know, it's when you're playing cards, you play the cards you're handed, not the cards you wish you had. And and we're playing the cards that were handed. And like the only question I'm not, you know, we would just be, are we okay with continuing to research it and they'll bring it back? And at some point, we would decide that we want to let the voters vote on it or not. That doesn't even mean we support it. But we're deciding, are we going to give the voters their choice? I guess the question, do we want to get a white paper as as Commissioner Thompson worded it?
I I think everybody wants more information. I mean, that's the that's the clarity with every, with the ask.
Yes.
You know, so so I.
I want to make sure there was at least that much.
I would think a a white paper on it provides for that clarity whe- whether your decision, I mean, I, you know, we've got, we've got a lot of issues coming before us in the future that are dealing with an ask possibly a referendum, I mean, which much, much more than one cent. So so, yeah, and and I'm, I'm going to have to be convinced about all those, just like this one. That it's for the good of the people of Brunswick County. So, yeah, I think, but I would like to have more information to be to be closed door about anything. You're never, you're never going to get anywhere. So I I would, I would, you know, I would love to see additional information that spells out how the process will work.
If I could add one thing. My oldest son and with my granddaughter live in Hamden, Connecticut, right by Yale and Quinnipiac Colleges. When I drive up there, I could get gasoline. I could afford gas. I spent a hundred and twenty-one dollars in tolls to get to Hamden, Connecticut. Now, it is last coming home, because like the the river crossings, like the George Washington Bridge, which is twenty bucks, you only pay it one way.
Wow. They try to get rid of you for free.
Yes, that's, that's always been the line. You know, like you got to pay to go into New York City, or you can get out for nothing. It's always, that's always been the line. So tolls could be just as devastating.
And that's another, do we want to open that?
That's another can of worms.
There's a bunch of them getting out.
Opening a can of worms, no matter what we what we do.
Yep.
So it sounds like there's hesitation, but want more info.
A lot of dollars at the end of the year.
A lot of voters to be the ones making this decision.
They would be.
It's got to be informed.
Yeah.
The constituents is doing it.
But when you break it down, just look at you throughout your day. You stop for a cup of coffee or a biscuit in the morning. You know, your lunch, if you go out to dinner, you know, you got to buy clothing. If you try to figure it out at the end of the year, ouch, it's one cent is a lot.
Yeah, I think I think the the ask for the paper is something that probably needs to be in place for any future ask of any tax referendum.
White paper, you mean?
Yeah, that that it needs to be very clear, not only to us, but to the public.
Yeah, because we have to educate them.
The expectation is of the ask.
I think that's an excellent point. You know, back on the prior school bond, I sat down three times with a member of the school board before I had any idea what they really wanted in the bond because they could not articulate it. That's what I'm hoping this will be able to get. It's clear.
Me, Marty and Aaron could tell you that.
That was on the prior bond, not this one. Yeah.
Yeah, well, and and I think the the, one of the issues that's going to come up from that is just like this or anything else, once you commit and say, well, this is what we're going to use the money for, that may not end up being what you use the money for down the road. And so that's going to, when you come back for the second ask, that's going to be on my mind that you didn't do what you said you were going to do with the last one.
I can tell you, there's been several of those.
Yeah, so so.
And that's a a big thing that we've talked about at the MPO is making sure that if this were to move forward and happen, that money is used for what we say it's going to be used for. And we'd have to get our legislators who do have some transportation sway on board with this before it was passed. But it's a first step and they just wanted us to come and see if there was at least openness to continue investigating it before they put a lot of time and energy into doing so. It sounds like we'll continue investigating.
Okay.
With great trepidation.
Is there any other business to come before the board?
Move.
I'll move.
I'll second the fully stated.
I think that was unanimous.
Yes, indeed.
So we are adjourned.
All right.